I'd like to call the meeting to order. It's 6:31. And do we, I will start with the pledge, please. Do we have a flag? There we go. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States.
The United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, free of whatever state and justice for all. Okay.
Do we have any? If we could just do a roll call, please.
Okay.
I'll call out members' names. Chair Bronio will be here shortly. Sue Pike.
Here.
Chris Davie. Ann Decker.
Here.
Scott Rich.
Here.
Ben Davies.
Here.
Rhea Klein.
Here.
Thank you.
And now if we have any comments from the audience?
Mr. Micali, I don't see any. Do you? Okay.
I do not. If there's anyone who would like to make a comment, you could unmute yourself or you could use the raise hand feature and I would see you. I see none.
Okay. So do we have any additions to the agenda?
I have one deletion, please, and that is F1A22. That is a repeat. Policy 1010 is the same information.
Okay. So now we're on to routine business. Approval of the minutes. I don't have the date. Does anyone have that?
Yes, it's August 20.
August 20. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Scott. Thank you, Rhea. Any discussion?
I think the second was Ann.
Oh, I had Rhea, but that's okay.
Okay.
Any discussion? Questions?
All those in favor?
All those in favor. Thank you.
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Abstentions? Okay. Minutes have been approved. Committee reports. The Finance Committee?
Kristen's having technical difficulties right now.
Uh-oh.
Okay, so Finance met this morning. And we can start with the June budget where we closed out FY 2020. 97% expended and the commitment to go back to the town was $165,000. And we are maintaining that and projected to return 165 is going to our FY 2021 budget and 194,811 is going back to the town.
Do you want to do the transfers now, Ann?
Just, we committed that last year towards this year's budget. I heard that part, but... Okay. That was from last year. So what we're returning is the 194,811.
Okay, all right. So I guess the 165,000 is from last year's budget. 194 is going to this year's budget. Yes, yes, yes. Clarifying. Thank you. And then let's, do we have to? We have to move on to transfers from there?
From June.
And then Kristen, are you able to go through those or Casal?
I am. If I could have just one minute to hopefully come back on and then I could be online. I apologize, but it just automatically shut down.
Okay, so we're waiting on Kristen to have her computer come back up again and then she will review the transfers.
I'll just pop my computer right in front of you for a second.
No, I'm okay. It's coming up right now.
Okay.
Okay, can you hear me? Okay, sorry about that. So we had a number of transfers in June. We had transfers to, the first one is covering some PD training about, focused on empowering students in distance learning. We had to cover Verizon Unlimited data and hotspots for those families. We provided hotspots to that did not have internet access so that their children could access education from home. A transfer to cover some office supplies. The maintenance supplies at Bolton High School and Center School. A document camera. Purchase of Chromebooks, which you guys had done those transfers, you may recall, last year, but were just for purposes of transparency showing them there. We purchased some tables, adjustable tables, for, because we knew that we were going to have to be socially distancing and we did not have furniture at Bolton Center School to be able to spread students out. So we purchased some more tables. A lot of PPE, you will see there. Shortfall in some math training, or rather, science training for one of our teachers. And then several components to high school graduation, which as you know, was virtual and outside at the Mansfield Drive-In. So we had pieces to cover that as well. And then lastly, we had an instructional supply shortfall of $32 in music.
Questions?
Correct. End of last year. Correct. Yes, correct. Yep. So you guys will just need to approve these transfers from June and then we'll move on to this year's budget in July and August. So we'll need a motion to approve the June transfer recommended by me.
Make the transfer.
Rhea seconds. Ben and Rhea, thank you.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Personnel Committee?
I'm sorry, we have now the finance update for July and August of this year.
Okay. Sorry, I jumped ahead.
Okay. Ann, you want to talk about how much?
Yeah, yeah. Sure. So for FY 2021, July and August, we are currently 7% expended. And we have some transfers to review. Thank you. So many of these transfers are either reclassifications or have to do with COVID. So the first one is supplies that we bought for PE to sort of create to-go kits for our PE students at Center School. The next one is a reclassification to purchase teaching/reading virtual resources for every grade at Center School. The next one is an online subscription for the web accounting software program to support the Bolton High School activity account. We have a reclassification fund, music textbooks for AP Music Theory. We needed additional texts because students can't share texts any longer during COVID. We had to purchase some periodicals in Language Arts line. Again, that's just a need that we had for COVID. Reclassification to purchase Science School Gizmos license for science teachers. There was money in their budget, but we had to reclass it from one section of the budget to another. A music-first subscription, again, a need to allow for online pieces for music. Purchase of visual experience ebook class set with Davis Art for art at the high school. So that could also be virtual. Reclass from tax benefits to other benefits to cover HSA and flex administration fees. We had PE COVID supplies. A reclass to purchase additional instructional music supplies. Another COVID purchase is music wind instrument masks. They're special masks with special slit in it to reduce the aerosol particles during performances. We had to purchase some Family and Consumer Science online resources for under COVID. An online French text, God bless you, under COVID. Spanish online text, again, under COVID. French and Latin texts, or online texts, again, for under COVID. Kuta Works, which allows students to complete math tasks on Chromebooks. We purchased that subscription under COVID. We had a reclassification for the wireless mics that we've purchased for teachers that aren't in yet, but we are anxiously awaiting them just to help with voice projection when they're wearing masks. So particularly the remote learners. And honestly, even the kids in the room can hear them better. Reclassification for the PE teachers' mics and speakers to be heard when wearing their masks by remote learners in the gym and outside. And then we had USB document cameras. We purchased those to work with the Chromebooks so teachers could be taking pictures and demonstrating that and showing the students things. And then we had a reclassification of the CT chip administration piece for the Health Insurance Collaborative. Casal created its own line before that number was buried in our insurance number and we felt that it was just better to pull it out and have it be its own standalone line. So we reclassified that so we know exactly what our fees are.
Thank you.
Any questions?
So a lot of these seem to be almost one-to-one reclassifications from a like item to a like item. But a lot of them also are very specifically related to the COVID situation.
Correct.
So while I appreciate that we're able to do that at this point, obviously, at some point, if these expenses continue, there won't be anything to borrow from or to... Has there been any conversations with the town with regard to the contingency that was in the budget? And when and how that's going to be maybe accessed for COVID-related expenses?
So not at this time. We have done a lot of examination of our current budgets and looked at, you know, what we had projected we would be using those monies for, right? Last fall and January, before we presented to the board and before you approved the budget. And staff has made decisions at this point, you know, that we really need this right now. We really need these online pieces and we don't need this because if we were all in person and all here and everything were like it used to be, we would have needed that. But now we need this. So at this point, we don't feel that we need to go have that conversation yet. We also have, unfortunately, several unfilled positions. We have two special education unfilled positions and we have one math unfilled position. One special ed at Center School, one special ed at the high school and one math position at the high school. So we're actualizing savings as we speak on those positions, both in health benefits and in salary. Those positions are posted. Currently, we do not have viable candidates for those positions. Both are areas of durational shortage in the state of Connecticut. We also have five open paraprofessional positions, which we currently do not have viable candidates either. You know, and how much of it is people don't want to take a job in a school system during COVID? Or they don't want to leave their current job at the start of the school year or during COVID? You know, it's hard to say. It could be all of those things and more. So, and we had a number of new hires, as you know, where we had some savings in both salary and health benefits. So at this time, I feel that we are able to manage that. To your point, that could change. But at this point, I'm hoping that we're going to simply be able to manage it and potentially not have to go for an ask. And that's today, September 10th, right? Fair question.
I think Chris had a question.
Yes, thank you. The air conditioning at the Center School, is that, has that come out of the regular operations budget?
Yes. So right now, that hit John's budget. And as has PPE, right, which we didn't budget for, nor did we budget for the rental of air conditioning at Center School. We have been awarded up to $94,000 from the state for PPE and other health and safety-related purchases. The state put out information. Then they put out a revised set of information because how that was determined was superintendents received a survey over the summer a couple of times where we were asked to put information in. And I think, you know, it was people's best guess at the time what things might cost, right? So there were several situations where there were two communities of the same size. In particular, I know of two in the western part of the state. And one received $800,000 for PPE and one received $80,000. They're right next to each other and they're the same size. So a lot of attention was brought to that by superintendents across the state about the inequities that occurred in this listing. So initially, my understanding was it was simply going to be a grant given to districts. Now it is a drawdown. So we're going to have to provide documentation, I think, of some kind. I received an email at close to noon today that information will be coming shortly on how this process is going to work. The money has to be drawn down by the 31st of December. So that money will go back in, if you will, to John's budget, right? To cover the cost of the air conditioning and the PPE and the cleaning supplies and, you know, all of those pieces that we have done. The desk shields, right, that we have for the kids and we have for the students and the Plexiglas that we put up for all of the admin assistants and administrators and all of those different kinds of things. So I would expect, hopefully, that next month, you're going to see, hopefully, you know, I say that, we've been waiting weeks for this information from the state to tell us how this is going to work. So on some level, we're at their mercy for that. So, but we're ready to go. We've coded things, as you can see, right, to COVID and where we can. Now, these online resources and things like that, I don't think, that doesn't fall in that category because there was a listing today of potential things that would be covered. But I believe, from what I read, and I sent it to both Ann and Andrew, that it certainly would appear to me that the air conditioning, because that's about the air quality in the school, which was the reason why we rented it, because we couldn't have fans oscillating and blowing air in, which is how we have normally handled air at Bolton Center School. So, you know, Columbia has already called an early release day this week because they didn't rent air conditioning. And I didn't want us to be in a position to have to be calling half-days or no school at all, particularly when we're in a hybrid model and kids have such limited time with their teachers for, you know, time for learning in the classroom. So. Did that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Anybody else? Okay.
This is Chris. I'll make a motion to approve the July and August transfers.
Second, Ben.
Any questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion's carried. Any report from Personnel Committee?
Andrew is here, Sue. He's just logging on, so.
Hey.
He can give the personnel.
Pass the baton back, yes.
All right. I've been asked to give the Personnel Update. Personnel Committee has met via Zoom several times in August to discuss the teacher contract that we will be discussing during executive session later this evening. And that concludes my report.
Okay. Um. VHS student representatives. Are they on? There they are.
Jack.
Emily, you first? Or, sorry, sorry.
Okay. The school opened in a hybrid learning format, which went well in the first two weeks. Bigs and Littles had their first virtual event last Friday, which also went well. And each freshman got paired with an upperclassman and that helped them get adapted to high school by having people that they know around.
Excellent. Thank you. Jack?
Sports started up last Wednesday with cross-country, boys and girls soccer and volleyball practicing with some precautions. And as of right now, the games are scheduled to start for early October. So a lot of people are looking forward to that. And seniors are getting their capstone projects approved right now and they're starting to, they're starting the Common App to apply to colleges. And the guidance counselors have been really helpful in that process. And the SATs are also coming up in early October. So they're just around the corner for seniors. And then the first week of school went really smoothly. Everyone is excited to be back in person. And I think the administration has done a pretty good job of keeping the environment safe. And the teachers have also done a good job at keeping, teaching both the kids in class and online simultaneously and making the transition seamless.
Thank you. Is Andrew back on yet?
He's here with me, yes.
Okay. So is he going to check over? Okay. We're at Community Reports.
Do we have any Community Reports?
No.
I guess we turn things right over to Kristen for Superintendent's School Report.
Thank you. So I want to first thank our administrators, our teachers and our staff who work so hard to ensure the safe and happy return of our students to school. I also want to thank our kids because we're really happy to see them and have them back. Our staff is absolutely amazing and I am so proud to work with such dedicated and caring people. We kicked off the first day back to school for staff on Tuesday, August 25th, with convocation. And the theme was building connections and knowing your why. I shared with staff that anything we can do to help each other and our students meet the need for connection also helps us as individuals. We will lift our own spirits as we lift the spirits of our friends, colleagues and students. And in doing so, we will bring out the best in each other because we are in this together. The power of building and sustaining connections for us as educators and staff members who support the work of teaching and learning, I believe, is directly linked to knowing your why. Together on Zoom, we watched a video from Michael Jr. who reminded us that when you know your why, your what has more impact because you are walking in and toward your purpose. Staff were asked to take a moment to reflect on their why. The why that leads you towards your purpose. The why you showed up today. The why your work matters. Because after all, every one of us makes a difference for our students. Staff were then asked to use the chat feature to share their why. Mr. Micali read each why and it was a very, very powerful and important reminder of why we are part of the development of our most precious resource, our children. We utilized the six professional development days prior to the start of school to focus on mandatory safety and other trainings, planning for the first units, working in PLCs, developing Google classrooms with links for students and parents, equity, cultural diversity and anti-racism professional development, which I'm going to talk about a little bit further in a minute. In addition, I also shared the new Bolton Public Schools 2020-2025 strategic plan with all staff. In spite of all the challenges we are facing in schools due to the pandemic, we had a very positive opening to the 2020-2021 school year. On August 31st, all teachers, paraprofessionals and administrators participated in Part 1 of a multi-part professional learning series on equity, cultural diversity and anti-racism offered by CRET. This first training was titled, "If You Are Human, You Are Biased." During the two-hour virtual meeting, participants explored the concepts of unconscious bias and engaged in self-exploration to recognize our own biases. Having identified personal biases and the impact of microaggressions, we then learned strategies to overcome preset or unconscious reactions and ways to respond that reflect on our conscious beliefs and values. During early release days throughout the year, teachers will attend three more trainings focused on diversity, culture and school-based strategies. CRET will be personalizing this training to meet the needs and questions of our Bolton staff. In addition to the teacher-specific training, the leadership team of administrators and teacher leaders will attend leadership-focused workshops focused on leading for equity. Any questions for me? All right. Seeing none, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Giard.
All right. Good evening, everybody. The first graphic here is one of the percentage of students at BCS that have chosen to go fully remote, which means they're not coming to school. On the hybrid days, they're going to be doing all their learning from home. There's a total of 101 students of 485, which is 21% of the school that chose to learn remote. And you can see in the graphic, it kind of ranges from 13% all the way up to 31% at another grade level with an average of 21% across the board that are learning remotely. Next slide. The opening of school, the first week was an extreme success, I would say. The first two days of September 2nd and 3rd saw the Buster Group on Wednesday and the Bulldog Group on Thursday. As Superintendent Heck said, it was just amazing to see the students back in the building, even though in reduced numbers, getting off the buses, walking the halls, coming to school. It truly was amazing. The half-days were full of time spent reviewing safety procedures, watching the safety videos that were sent out to the school community earlier in the month, making students make sure they're set up with their technology, with the Chromebooks, their different platforms, with their passwords so that when they go home, they're able to log in. And helping students get set up with their classroom materials because they're not sharing materials, so students have more materials at their desks, have more containers with their materials, so making sure they're set up with their shields and all their materials. And then it was lunch and it was time to go home. So the half-days went by quickly, but they were used very efficiently by the staff to make sure the students were set up for learning. The first Learning from Home Day was last Friday. The first Learning From Home Day was last Friday, and the students had a scheduled class time to meet with their teachers. It was shortened to about 15, 20 minutes for each class period, but we wanted to get students used to logging in from home, so when we have our Learning From Home Wednesdays, we'll know how to do that. The feedback from staff at the staff meeting later in the day on Friday was that the virtual meetings were very well attended by students, which was great to hear, more so than in the spring. We have full days this week, with the Buster Group had come in on Tuesday and Wednesday, and the Bulldog Group is Thursday and Friday of this week. The full days are going well, and we're starting to get into our groove with the students at home and with the students that we have in person. The arrival and dismissal procedures for the school changed a little bit this year, because we switched the whole school to one arrival and one dismissal. That has gone well. A video was sent home to families explaining the procedures last month, and we've had to make a few tweaks since then, and Superintendent Heck has been amazing. She's been a crossing guard since school began, and now elementary side, so she's had some great feedback. We sent out another message to parents today, letting them know of another change. The staff, students, and parents have been great about following all the safety procedures on school grounds, like truly amazing. We have painted six feet markings on the sidewalks, wearing masks, washing hands. We're able to successfully practice some of our safety drills this week, modified but in accordance to Addendum Eight from the Connecticut State Department of Education. All of our drills have been very successful. We've had three so far this week, and we have one more drill tomorrow, because we wanna make sure we do fire drills and lockdown drills with both cohorts of students. Yeah, so a very successful opening of school, and the staff and the students are excited to be back in the building.
Thank you, Mr. Giard. Any questions for Mr. Giard?
What percentage of students are not coming on the bus, or what percentage are coming on the bus?
I have bus duty, so when I go on the buses, I'd say on average, you see on any given bus anywhere from about six to 10 students. That's probably the best way I could answer that for you.
So, what, but the, when you took, you probably took a survey of parents, right, at the beginning or in the summer? So what percentage of parents said they weren't going to, or they were gonna take their students to school or their kids to school?
It was a high percentage of, we're gonna drive them in, and part of our reopening plan was we were encouraging parents to drive their students to school.
Right.
So I think it was just a personal choice, plus our encouraging them, so the numbers are lower, but I've actually seen a little bit of an uptick since last week.
Okay, so you're saying like there are about six to eight students on the, six to 10 students on a bus that holds 20, 30 students, or?
I think the bus capacity is about 70, but that's if you're putting three in a seat and you're really cramming it in.
Right, right. Oh, so that's very few students. There's plenty of room. Okay.
Yes, yep.
Right. But remember too, though, on those days, half the students are also coming to school, so certainly a lot of parents are definitely driving their kids, for sure. And like Daryl said, we encourage them to do that, just to allow for the, you know, spreading out on the bus as well.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Muselli, sir.
Oh, can I ask you a question?
Oh, sorry.
That's okay. I noticed that the, it seemed like there were quite a few open-choice students who were opting for distance learning. Do you know what percentage of them are?
Yeah, Mr. Muselli, if you could go back one more slide? That's actually a fairly small percentage of our students. I would say it's proportional with, with the rest of the school community, and actually even up till today, we're seeing an even number of students who are going from hybrid to remote and remote to hybrid. So even every day, it's, it's currently changing and shifting, but I'd say it's pretty even of who's switching to go to what right now.
Thank you.
Okay, seeing no other questions. Mr. Muselli.
Here's a peek at the high school profile for remote learners. So we had a pretty smooth opening. There are 36 students, and exactly the same scenario as Mr. Giard just pointed out. We had two ins and two outs over the last two days, so we're still at 36, but it's a different group. So that's about 13% of our students, and you can see the breakdown there. The first two days of school, we welcomed students in for those half-days. All classes met for those eight-day, all eight periods, even though they were half-days, so students were to get all their books and all their supplies and all their training. The third day, we had the opportunity for all students and staff to practice connecting from home, and that included the very successful Bigs and Little event that you heard about earlier. And I just wanna tip my hat to Mrs. Titlebaum and Mr. Gensanti, the advisors for that group. They did a really great job. The leadership team debriefed the first few days during our weekly meeting, and we had three major observations on those, those first couple of days. One is the teachers really enjoyed the energy of seeing students in person again. The, the second was that students worked hard to applica, excuse me, acclimate to the, the new norm, and that kids were even engaging with their peers learning from home, and that was, that was really nice to see. This week, we had the full days of school following our hybrid belt schedule. We also conducted safety drills, and the drills have been modified to support the student's safety during the pandemic. I had met with the President of the Connecticut Emergency Management Association to gather guidance on how to make appropriate modifications, and I reviewed those with our Emergency Management Director and Fire Marshal, and he approved those, and those are the procedures that both buildings followed this week. Our Dean of Students and I held some drop-in Zoom meetings, both the prior to the opening of school, and then a, a second one earlier this evening, and although it wasn't huge groups, we had some good questions and some good comments, and if I can multitask, hang on a second. Sorry. There we go. So earlier today, actually not early, late in the day, like after 1:00 today, I asked faculty just to shoot me some comments that, about engagement. I thought that might be nice to, to have that in hand before I met with parents or with you, and so I just leave it up in the screen for a minute. Those are just some comments, some candid comments from some teachers that came out this afternoon. So we are working hard and preparing to embrace the new norm at Bolton High School. Any questions for me?
This is Chris. I had a, just a quick question about the number of Columbia students. How many Columbia freshmen are there?
There are five.
Would you put the other, that graph back up, please, the one with the percentages of?
Sure, I can do that.
Thank you. It seems as though there's a large percentage of Hartford students that aren't coming in.
Well, yes and no. So yes, by percentage, but one child makes all the difference, and one of the returns is actually a choice student. We got that word today, and then we'll be back in Monday, so that percentage will drop pretty quickly when we go to four out of 15.
Okay. Is there any, but, so if a parent has chosen to stay with the remote learning, is there any attempt to ask them to consider changing that, or I was just letting it?
No, the direction has been from the Commissioner of Education that parents, and from the Governor, that parents have every right to select remote, and we, it's a parent's decision.
Oh, yeah, I understand that. I'm just thinking about, you know, maybe contacting them to find out, you know, explain, or like at least inform them about how it's going so that they have that information as well, because they might not know.
You know, many of those families anecdotally have shared with us that they're making those decisions based on very serious health factors in the home, so it, I would personally never bring that up to a family, because I, you know, I don't know the reasons that they're, you know, not everybody's sharing reasons, so we're, we're just embracing the family decision and supporting everybody the best we can.
Okay, that sounds.
Daryl?
And we've also talked, Ria, to all those families through parent meet and greets, and then we also had every teacher call every single student in the school the week before school started, and Mr. Herr and myself have gotten tons of emails, and we're, we're not, instead of emailing back, we're calling families, so a lot of those are the remote ones as well, so we're filling them in, answering questions as well.
Okay, that, now that's great, so they're getting as much information as they, they need. Great, thanks, and it's good for you to know, I think, as well, if, you know, what their concerns are.
Oh, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, hearing none concludes my report this evening.
Unfinished businesses already? New business, and that will go over to policies, and I will turn it over to either Kristen or Chris, or whoever would like to, or Sue, or whoever is prepared to tell us about these.
Unmute myself. I'm happy to run through the list of policies and give brief explanations as to why we are recommending changes. As you might imagine, the vast majority of them have, are just simple updates to make sure that we're in compliance with any new federal state laws or regulations that relate to the COVID pandemic. So the very, the very first one, 1010, I believe is a, actually a brand-new policy, and it's, it just explains the process for implementing and then repealing the temporary policies. And feel free, Superintendent Heck, to jump in if I'm missing anything. Policy 1470, concerning health and safety protocols, the same sort of thing. It's a new temporary policy that allows the administration to develop the necessary health and safety protocols. 5135. So this is actually a revision, I believe, of an existing policy to reflect that privately-owned technological devices, including desktop computers, can be used during instructional time, if specifically permitted by the instructional staff. It was also revised to reflect that improper use of such technologies prohibited when it is being used for school or at a school-sponsored activity. All right. Policy 1240, so this is a temporary revision to allow the administration more flexibility in limiting or restricting nonessential volunteers into the school buildings and to require that they follow any of the district's health and safety protocols. 1250 is similar. It applies to visitors rather than volunteers. 1330, again, a similar policy, but applying to other groups that might use school facilities in the period-after-hours, and just to ensure that any groups are again following any health and safety provisions enacted by the administration. 1455, the green cleaning programs. It temporarily clarifies that any disinfectant or sanitizer approved by the Department of Administrative Services is okay to use.
Sorry, I'm feeling a little light, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Let's see. Changes that one. 3541, transportation, newly revised language due to changes in the law, and also temporarily being revised to note that the district is going to be requesting that parents volunteer to transport their kids to school. And also, it notifies parents that they are responsible for the safety of their children while walking to and from the bus stop, and that they're expected to follow social distancing and mask-wearing and any other health and safety rules. All right. Ones from the 4000 series, 4112.5, employment checks. This has been revised because the timelines for, or the ability to get state and national criminal record checks has, it's not been as easy as it once was, so the policy was revised to accommodate any delays. 4112.9, oh, actually, we're not doing that one. Hold, sorry.
4118.1.
8.1, sex discrimination and sexual harassment. It's the Personnel Policy. It's been revised in accordance with new Title IX federal regulations that became effective in August. This is actually a policy that you would probably appreciate if we could approve it tonight, since it needs to be approved as soon as possible.
Honestly, I'd appreciate it if you approved all of them tonight, but I guess we'll, we'll see where we get to, because the modifications, in particular, and a couple of new policies, that would be great if we could do that.
All right. 4118.4, use of district computer systems, revised to clarify the Board's responsibility relative to computer systems, specifically that, noting that, you know, we've installed computers and a computer network on our premises, and that we may provide other devices that can access the network, but that we don't necessarily provide computers and internet access in locations other than onboard premises. Regulations and notices regarding electronic monitoring are also revised to specify that employees are expected to exercise appropriate judgment and may be monitored electronically when engaging in remote teaching or use of a digital teaching platform. 5112, tendence, truancy, and chronic absenteeism. This is a completely revised policy. Basically, we hadn't been using shipment policy, so their policy will replace our existing one. It does include some temporary provisions requiring schools to actively monitor absences and collect data concerning medical absences to help the district identify any trends that might suggest spread of illness such as COVID. And again, that's, you know, something that the state is now requiring us to do. 5131, this is again, one where we are replacing our existing policy with shipment's policy. It also includes some temporary revisions to clarify that students may be disciplined, including up to suspensions or expulsions if they fail to comply with the school's health and safety protocols developed around COVID-19, and it also allows for any expulsion hearings to be held virtually if it's not possible for us to meet in person. 5134, use of district computer systems. These have been revised again to clear, I mean, it's very similar to the one 4118.4, so we're really just clarifying the Board's responsibility relative to the systems, acknowledging that we provide a network and devices here, but not necessarily in other locations. It also includes some updates to Uh, it also includes some updates to reflect current federal and state statutory definitions that are unrelated to COVID. Then we have five-one-four-one-R, which is a uh administrative regulation um for health assessments. We're changing over to shipment's model regulation. It's also temporarily revised to address recent Department of Public Health guidance. Um, specifically it implements flexibilities in the timing for required health assessments upon initial entry to school. Um, so if students are having difficulty getting a doctor's appointment um to get the checkup that they need to go into sixth or seventh grade or ninth or tenth grade, this allows for some flexibility with those requirements. Uh, five-one-four-one-dot-one-R is pretty much exactly the same thing, but it applies to immunizations. So again, students who are having difficulty getting in for those immunizations, it gives them some flexibility or gives us some flexibility to work with them. Five-one-four-five-dot-five, prohibition of sex discrimination and sexual harassment. This is the student version of the policy discussed earlier. Um, there's another one that has updates based on new Title IX uh federal regulations that went into effect last month, so it needs to be approved as soon as possible. Six-one-seven-two-dot-six, credit for online courses. This is also changing over to shipment's model policy. It was revised somewhat during the summer to address closure of schools and allow for students to earn credit through distance learning programs. And then nine-three-two-one, time, place and notice of meetings. Again, changing over to shipment's model policy. See, it does. It actually doesn't have any uh updates that are required by the state due to COVID. But seemed like a reasonable time to just put it in place. Uh, nine-three-two-two, public meetings and executive session. This is a revised policy. Um, again, uh, the revisions came from shipment after they reviewed their policies over the spring and summer. Um, these revisions aren't due to any new guidance for, for COVID, but uh just to bring things into line with what they think is best practice. And then finally, nine-three-two-five, meeting conduct. Again, we've revised to the shipment policy. Um, oh, and actually this does have some. It, it allows the uh Board of Education to convene virtually and to limit or restrict public comment during virtual board meetings. So it, it does have some, some COVID-related items.
Okay, so. Hearing one-one-eight-point-one is the one that we cracked, the one that needs to happen immediately.
Four-one-one-eight-one and five-one-four-five-five are the two that are most urgent.
I would also offer that the student discipline one and the transportation ones are also urgent. Which was five-one-three-one. And three-five-four-one.
So do you like to make a motion to adopt all of those numbers this evening?
Uh, when you say all of those numbers, do you mean all twenty-one policies or just the four that Kristen singled out? Sure, so I'll make a motion then uh that the board go ahead and adopt on first read. Policy four-one-one-eight-dot-one, sex discrimination and sexual harassment personnel. Policy five-one-three-one, student discipline. Policy five-one-four-five-dot-five, prohibition of sex discrimination and sexual harassment students. And policy three-five-four-one, transportation.
Do we have a second for that?
Second, Sue.
Is there anyone who wants to ask any questions or any discussion on this, uh, these particular policies?
Um, I have more of a kind of a general question or comment about the naming convention of these, the ones that are specifically related to COVID nineteen that have temporary provisions. I, in reading the, the new policy, temporary, you know, the ten-ten policy, it clearly states that the header of the each policy has to say that it's a COVID nineteen with a designation. I would suggest it needs to be in the file name as well, inconsistently. When I downloaded all the, the packet, the, the Word document names were all done differently. Some said, you know, at the end they had COVID revisions, some didn't, that did have COVID. I just think when they're, when they're put into the policy section on the, you know, on the website or whatever, we should be able to clearly identify which ones that are, are temporary, that are going to expire and which ones not by the, the file title.
So. Uh, uh, I'm sorry, Scott, go ahead.
Well, I just said, so that you know, I mean, you know, most of these you were describing did have provisions that were, were COVID-related and those expire on June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-one. So I just want, I think we should know by looking at the file names, which ones are that. The ones that are listed right now, you wouldn't know that it has COVID-specific information in it or not.
I, I, yeah, I mean, I guess as they're listed here, um, I don't know if you noticed when you opened the files in the upper right-hand corner.
Yeah, but you wouldn't, you wouldn't know until you opened it, is my point.
True, so when, when we put them up on the website, Kristen, can we have the C, C-nineteen?
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask um that Kate do that, compare the host of our policies and I also noted on the ten-ten one, I needed to note that as C-nineteen as well. Um, and I will change that in all of these that were a C-nineteen for a second read as well. Um, and I will ask Kate to do that, I.
Yeah, I just, I just think it'll be, it'll be clear and then we'll know which ones have to be revisited when they expire. But even though they might have edits that are permanent and some edits that are temporary, but I think it'll be easier to know right upfront which ones need to be looked at.
I agree.
Yeah, that's a good point.
That's a great point and hopefully they will accommodate. Thank you.
Thank you for raising that. Uh, do we have any other questions or discussion on these policies? Hearing nothing. All those in favor of adopting the policies mentioned?
Hi.
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 Opposed abstentions. Those ones pass, we'll grab the rest next month. And we'll move on to item F-two, resignations.
Thank you. Yes, we have one retirement, Jamie Ward. His last day with us will be October ninth and we want to thank him for his dedicated service to Bolton Public Schools and wish him health and happiness in his retirement. And we have three resignations, Stacy Bane, leading paraprofessional at Bolton Center School, Aubrey Clark, library media paraprofessional and Polybook List BCS art teacher. That is all I have there.
Ever popular future business? Do we have any? No?
Well, I don't have anything under future business. I would just like to offer a happy birthday to Mrs. Dawn Askey. Her birthday is this evening and I told her not to be on this evening and I took her part of the superintendent's report, so I really wish you a flick off and go enjoy your birthday. Good night, Sarah.
Happy birthday, Sarah.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Thank you. Good night.
Well, good night, everybody, soon, because I will be looking for a motion to go into executive session for a discussion concerning the tentative agreement with the teachers' union and also for Superintendent Heck to be invited into that discussion.
So moved.
Uh, do we have any discussion, questions, comments, concerns? All those in favor?
Hi. Hi. Hi.
Opposed extension. And thank you, everybody.